All right, I'd like to call the Orange Board of Education meeting to order on Monday, September 21st at, what time we have, Susan?
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Mission statement, counselor, would you be kind enough to read the mission statement?
I am honored. Yep. The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is the shared responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference.
I don't believe we have any public participation, is that correct? Very well. We have no correspondence. Consent agenda, I am looking for a motion to accept the item under the consent agenda. The item is the minutes from the August 17th, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes? Ken, second. Betty, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Stain? Mr. Cap, stain, do you have that, Mary? Anyone else? Very good, thank you. There will be no presentations this evening. Dr. Scarpetti, would you be kind enough to give us your report?
Thank you, Mr. Crowe, and good evening, board members. I'm happy to report that we have begun our fourth week of school. I can't thank, as I did in the past board meeting, all our members, our subcommittee members, our reopening plan members of the, all the hard work that they've contributed all during the summer in order to make, as what I feel, the best that we could do at this time. That said, we are still reflecting on where we've done well and where we need to do better. As we look, I actually have to extend more thanks to people because, once we started in the summer, it extended to our whole entire community members. So, for example, our parents. I can't thank them enough for their patience. If any of you have seen or any of you that have participated in the drop off and pickup our first few weeks, it needed everyone's patience until we started getting our motion together. When I look at our parents with our remote learners, there's been glitches, there's been challenges, we continue to work on that, we want to thank all of them. But now this extends to our communities. The Orange Congressional Church, they have allowed us to use their parking lot. Why? It's because of what has developed with Mrs. Lasto and her creative way in order to create a fluid system with our drop off and pickup. In addition to that, we thank our highway department, our parks department for helping us up. As you may have noted, we've suffered some storms already, and they've helped us with limbs, trees, getting our fields ready at Turkey Hill School. And then as we continue to think, and I've shared this with some of our board members, and also our leadership team, it dawned on me how grateful we are to our Board of Ed members, our selectmen, our Board of Finance, our First Selectmen, of what we did without knowing that there was a pandemic coming. And what do I mean by that? I think back of when we had no Chromebooks, and I know some of you were on the board when we first enacted upon that. That allowed us to meet the needs of our students when, in a short time where we had to give Chromebooks out to our students. Then I also thought about, there was a time and place, and I know some of you remember this too, that our technology department had part-time staff. There was a time when we, when technology was growing and the supports that were needed, the board supported us. And now, what allowed that to happen is we had each of our technology team at each of our schools. So during the first month, and of course continuing to our parents too, we had a staff member each of our schools, so if a teacher needed a support, the response was immediate. And then I think in a short few years, and again, from the town side and all of you with your support in the First Selectmen, I can't imagine what Racebrook School would look like with, if that parking lot hasn't changed with our drop off and pickup. So, there was an overwhelming gratitude for all of us and the parents. And again, we don't know what lies in our future, right? We don't know what situations have, will arise, and situations, I want to let you know, have arose since, since school has started. And I think the policies and procedures we set in place in order to address that. Dr. Mohammed has been available to myself and our principals immediately. Our school nurses have taken about more responsibility, so we know that questions that are asked, that we make sure that all our students and faculty are safe. And so, as we go and we move forward, we always want to remind our staff, parents, about the honesty. You may have heard in other districts where students may have had a COVID test, and instead of waiting for the results, they've gone back to school, and lo and behold, they've tested positive. So we ask that our members, no matter if you're a student or a faculty member, please, if you are not feeling well, stay at home. If you've tested for COVID, stay and let's know that if you have the results, first be returning. It's really an honor system that we have to go by and to build on our success that we've had thus far. I've shared with all of you, there was a event that we had to research, look at, at Turkey Hill School. And we thank, again, Dr. Mohammed and the nurses for their guidance through that process. That class returned. But because of the work that was done in the summer, that teacher had less of a transition with our students. That connection that was made for us to be in-person, I think, was hit it off well because tomorrow we could be in hybrid, tomorrow we could be remote, we don't know. But that training and professional learning that was provided, we've seen in action already. So, thank you to all of you and all our, our community to have supported us through this way, and we're looking forward to going, going, and going, and keep on going, and keeping everyone healthy as well as we can be. With regards to personnel, we've all had to be creative with our convocation, and one of the things that we did, well, let me share this first, I'll share this at the end, just to update, we did hire a few staff. We hired two math aides and a special ed teacher at Peck Place School. We still have the same postings that we've had regarding substitutes in all areas. Now, what I was referencing a moment ago was being creative. So we weren't able to have all our staff come together this, this year, but we want to honor the work that they've done, but we also want to honor our retirees and our people of years of service. So, just want to take a moment of what we sent our entire staff to acknowledge that, So again, a little tribute for years of service for our staff of 25 years and our retirees. And before I thank the entire staff of beginning the school year, I did want to share, I was looking over my notes, that I neglected to share, updates with our remote learners versus our in-person. Right now, we are about at between 10 and 10 and a half percent of our students enrolled in the Orange Public Schools who are, who are doing remote learning. You may recall that we were hovering over 12 to 13, so we've seen actually more students return back, but it fluctuates anywhere from 10 to 10 and a half percent. And what I wanted to conclude with is not only honoring our members, our years of service, but our staff that have welcomed our kids, connecting with their kids and our, and our remote learners, they're doing just an incredible job, along with everyone else, to make this as, as much as a, as a success as we have in, to begin the year. I'm open to any questions, Mr. Crowe, to you or the board.
Dr. Scarpetti? No, I think we're good, doctor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Christine?
A few things from the business office. The end of August has been, can you hear me okay? Yeah? The end of August has been really about closing out the 2019-20 year. We completed our state reporting package, which was due September 1st, and our auditors have begun their annual audit of the 2019-20 financials and procedures. August is only two months into our new budget year, so there isn't much activity. It was a relatively ordinary month, except for the protective equipment, which we did purchase, and which we'll continue to purchase. So these are things like child masks, adult masks, face shields, desk shields for all the students, hand sanitizer throughout the buildings, gowns for nurses, gloves, just to name some of the things that we've, that we've been buying. And we've requested reimbursement for this PPE, or protective equipment, through FEMA, through, which is the Federal Emergency Management Association, and we've done that through the town of Orange. So we'll hear their response probably sometime in October, we don't know what, what that will be. But we also have, in addition, the governor's announced his commitment of 130.8 million coronavirus relief funds to assist districts with the cost of safely reopening their schools. And this funding will go directly to districts to offset additional unbudgeted costs that are associated with reopening, such as protective equipment, health and safety, and for Orange, that means the ventilation systems being recommissioned, as Mike talked about last time. Non-personnel related transportation is also part of that. So, we're purchasing things like bike racks, we're entertaining cameras for our buses. Also, you know, new radios, walkie-talkies for buses, is what we would use some of this money for, this coronavirus relief funds. We also spoke about, there are ESER funds, which are elementary and secondary education emergency relief funds, and we'll be using those mostly for academic reasons for districts. These are based on Title I funding, and Orange has been allocated about 30,000 in that case. We've spent that in the area of enhancing, enhancing our remote learning, namely cameras in the classrooms that Evelyn had demonstrated last time that we were here at, at the board meeting. Also, 400 Chromebooks have been ordered by the state for the, for the Orange School District, and 65 mobile hotspots have been placed on behalf of Orange Public Schools as part of the state's Everybody Learns Initiative. So, in terms of cafeteria update, we've been delivering lunch to the classrooms, as we all know. We've been offering lunch to our remote learners as well, at their respective schools if they order in the morning, but we are moving to the seamless summer option for lunch now, which will entitle all of our students in Orange to take home, or to have in the classroom a free bagged lunch, if they so choose. Similar to the way that they were serving students the bag lunches during the COVID shutdown. So that will be available. Also, our remote learners can order that lunch as well, and they can pick up for their whole family at the school that's closest to them. They don't have to just pick up for the student that goes to that school, they'll be able to pick up a lunch for all of their students at the school that's closest to them. And I think that's, that's it for me. Yeah? Any questions? Sure.
It's for Christine, go ahead, Sue.
Christine, I just have one question about the, for the remote learners. If they are planning to pick up at a school, do they need to order it ahead of time?
They do need to call the office of the school that they'll be picking up at, so that we get that into the cafeterias, so they can prepare that. They do need to call before 9:00 AM to order that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Christine, I just have one question. When you were talking about the funding that would help to pay for PPE and other things, is there a dollar amount tied to that, or are we just spending the money and sending in for reimbursement?
Yeah, there, there is a dollar amount titled, connected to the coronavirus relief funds, it's in two parts. The first part is for protective, safety, and health, and that's, Orange has been allocated 250,000. And the second part is for transportation, and we've been allocated 130,000 in that area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else for Christine?
I think this one. So, good evening, everyone. Like Dr. Scarpetti, I would also like to thank our teachers for their passion, their flexibility, their hard work in supporting our students, and our students remote and in-person. I'd also like to thank our students who continue to be enthusiastic with all of the mitigating strategies in place. It's been a pleasure to interact with so many of them and hear them share that they are happy to be back in school. So I'd like to start my report with providing an update on professional learning. So for, for professional learning, we've had Curriculum Wednesdays in the past. Those are those, once a month Wednesdays that start after dismissal and last until 4:45. And this year, the focus is going to be on professional learning instead of the curriculum mapping that we've done in the past. So we're renaming the Curriculum Wednesdays to Professional Learning Wednesdays, and we're going to use that time to provide staff with the opportunity to continue the work that they started the week prior to school starting. So, engaging in increasing their knowledge of all of our digital resources, all the resources that they need for distance learning and for social emotional well-being. And I, when we just saw the Years of Service tribute, that was created by Matt Ullring using WeVideo, that's one of our district resources, and so, teachers are learning how to use WeVideo for distance learning, students are learning how to use, this is exactly why we wear the masks in case somebody's spitting, they're talking. But, so, so I'm glad we're like six feet away without the mask. But, so, our stu, our students depend on our teachers learning how to use these resources, and so that was a perfect example. Last Wednesday was the first Curricul, Professional Learning Wednesday, and our teachers engaged with the Mobile Mind platform, and I'm so proud to say that, well, for each course, teachers have to complete a task, submit their task, have it evaluated in order to pass the course. And some of the learning pathways include titles like the Distance Learning Expert Pathway, the Google Level One and Two Certification Preparation Pathways, and then there are so many other courses that explore all the Google applications. And what's great about this is that there are offerings on things that we don't know about. So it's great for teachers who want to learn something, you know, and Google what they want to learn, but this also helps, like, when you don't know what you don't know, it's telling you something that you wouldn't have Googled. So, there's a lot of great learning embedded in the platform. So what I wanted to say earlier was that, since the start of the school year, our staff has collectively completed 394 courses, and they've earned 144 badges. So, at next month's Professional Learning Wednesday, our teachers will have the opportunity to engage in a social emotional learning course that was created by Dr. Mark Brackett and funded by the Dalio Foundation. Our principals will share more information regarding this course with their staff, but it is entitled, "Social and Emotional Learning in Times of Uncertainty and Stress: Research-Based Strategies." There is an opening webinar to the course, which we'll share on our website soon for all who are interested. A certificate from the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence will be earned for all who complete the course. I'd also like to share a little update on assessments. We spent the last two weeks assessing students with STAR, which is the Computer Adaptive Assessment, it's short. In addition, we've coupled the reading assessment, or the reading assessments with just a quick oral reading fluency and a math screener as well. And as far as curriculum, we began to launch the units last week and this week. The first two weeks were really for students to become familiar with returning to school, learning about all of the mitigating strategies and the protocols, and that's about it. Betty?
Thank you, Evelyn. I've just, when you talked about the Google platform that teachers are using for their Professional Learning Wednesdays, is that something that's available to them at any time, or is that only a Wednesday thing?
It's available at all times, and it's kind of addictive. When you start winning those badges, it's like the video game principle, you don't just do the bottom of Wednesday. So, they're, they're available all year long, whenever they can engage in them, and there are so many, so, there's a lot to cover there.
Anyone else for Evelyn?
Good evening, everyone. To reiterate what Dr. Scarpetti started out with regarding the start of our school year, we are off to a great school year. Staff, students, families are working collaboratively to make up for some of that lost time we had in order to get us back on track with things related to special ed. Those include ensuring that students and families have reestablished their in-person connection with the school community, holding any outstanding annual review meetings, conducting testing that was required during our previous school year that we weren't able to do during our closure, and handling the normal business of a regular start to a school year, which can be pretty involved to begin with. I am so proud of our staff, our families, and our students, it's clearly such a dedicated group of people, and clearly a, a community that cares for one another. So I am really pleased to be a part of this community. To provide you an update on one of our grants, this year is year two of our primary mental health project, which, as you may recall, is a play-based way of connecting children personally with a caring adult. We are targeting children in all four schools this year for grades K through three. Those students would be considered for services based on a teacher's survey and any input that the teacher gave, as well as parental feedback. Parents do need to give consent for their child to engage in this play-based session with the adult. The project is being led by our social worker in conjunction with each of our school psychologists, and a child associate will be providing the direct services to the children who are identified. New, we have Title IX regulations that were issued on August 14th that we are required to follow, so as a result, Dr. Scarpetti has asked Mike Gray and I to review our Title I practices and to create forms for staff and students to complete if someone or someone they know, believe, have experienced sexual harassment. These forms will be posted on the district website as soon as they are completed and approved, and the state is also offering training in October that all of the school principals, myself and Mike, will be attending to update us on general Title IX regulations, but also to ensure that everyone is aware of the new regulations along with that. And that's it. You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Gray?
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to echo the sentiments of Dr. Scarpetti, Mrs. Zito, that heading into the fourth week, it makes me really proud to have the privilege of being able to serve the community of Orange and to see the dedication, day in and day out, of all the staff, you know, the kitchen staff, the custodial staff, our teachers, paraprofessionals, but I have to say, walking through the buildings on a daily basis and getting to know the other buildings, the children are, they're just doing an amazing job. They really want to be in school, and they're doing everything they can to stay in school. They are washing their hands all the time, they are wearing their masks, and they're following directions, all the mitigating strategies that I'm sure parents practiced over the summer is certainly evident, as you walk through the buildings and you see the children. So, like Dr. Scarpetti said, thank you to the entire community, and very happy to be starting the fourth week, fourth full week of school. So, with that, I'd like to update you on several items since our last meeting. At the very beginning of the school year, our buildings looked amazing with landscaping that was completed on the school grounds, and that welcomed all of our staff, students, and families back to school on a positive note. We continue to address our HVAC system, and I'm happy to say that new high-efficiency rooftop units were installed both at Turkey Hill School and Racebrook School recently, and we're looking to install one more at Racebrook School in the near future. We have scheduled our next filter change to take place in our buildings toward the end of October, and this will again be all of our UN events, our air handling units, and our rooftop units will have the filters changed. And I know that the Turkey Hill School loading dock is part of the board business this evening, and would be happy to speak about that item if necessary when we reach that portion of the agenda. Has already been mentioned already, previously, but- Has already been mentioned already, uh, previously, but we purchased bike racks for the school. Uh, if you drive by Peck Place School any day of the week, lately you see, uh, about probably 20 to 30 bicycles in front of the school. Um, it's great to see because it reminds us probably of when we were younger, and we used to walk or ride our bikes to school. Um, Racebrook School has a little bit less than that, and Turkey Hill School probably because of the hills around the school, uh, less than that. But we have ordered bike racks for the schools, uh, and we did go with school colors. So, Peck Place will be getting blue bike racks. Racebrook will be getting red. Uh, Turkey Hill, they did not have an orange, so I bought like a, a brownish color. Uh, Dr. Artaberry was okay with that. Um, those should be arriving later this week, and we hope to get those set up. Uh, one thing I would like to just remind any families that are allowing their children to ride bikes to school, it is very important to remind children, especially during those busy hours of arrival and dismissal, that they really need to follow the rules of traffic. They need to be on the sides of the road with their bicycle, not in the middle of the roads as they're riding to and from home. They also need to make sure they are wearing a helmet at all times. That is so important for young children, to have that helmet for that extra layer of protection if anything should happen. So, again, riding on the sides of the roads, don't ride in a big pack. Ride single file, one behind the other, making sure we have our helmets on. We've also purchased for our buildings, uh, large gazebo-sized tents. They're 20 feet by 30 feet. Uh, these tents will be used at the buildings to provide shelter when holding outdoor lessons, mask breaks, et cetera. Uh, they are due to arrive this Thursday. Uh, these are the type of tents you might see if you go to the Orange Country Fair. They're quite large, and we've ordered three of them for each of the buildings, uh, and we'll be installing them, uh, soon. Uh, Mrs. Koch, uh, referenced the PPE that we've been purchasing. Uh, we have quite a lot in the buildings already. Uh, still have some in stock, also in my office. If you try to get into my office, you have to navigate some of the boxes in there. Uh, but we do have, uh, a plethora of child-sized masks, adult masks, um, sanitizing wipes, face shields, desk shields, um, refillable sanitizer bottles, uh, nitrile gloves, and isolation gowns. So, we, uh, continue to, um, look at how much we have in stock, what's needed, and continue to order as necessary, um, with our PPE. And I believe that is all that I have right now. Any questions?
Anything for Mike? Betty?
Well, it's really not for Mike exactly, but I just want to say congratulations to all of you for an outstanding job on making it safe and secure for all our students and families to be attending school all the time. Frankly, I don't know any other town in the area that's been able to do it. So, I think, uh, kudos to all of you, and, um, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support in that.
Anyone else for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
To board business, uh, we have a second read. If you recall, I think this was coming to us as a second read, and then the state updated its, um, policy in which, and then, uh, Mrs. Brow and her committee took it and, uh, updated their policy again. So, this is current policy, and I thank you, Mrs. Brow, and your committee for your hard work on this. If you want to speak to this for a moment.
I just realized there's a word missing. So, I should have caught that before. Um, so, we, um, did meet, and thank you to the committee for meeting. Um, there... I don't even know about the order I should do this. So, we did very slight wording changes, really nothing substantive. Um, I am noticing in the definitions that it should say for face covering and mask, a clean cloth paper disposal of face covering. So, that word, um, should be there. Um... Otherwise, really, we were, um, clarifying. I think we did make one additional change with the number of breaks. We, um, we had originally said that there would be a set number, and we decided that that could become very constraining. Um, and that the policy is very clear that philosophically, that teachers understand, um, that this is a change for students and that they'll be sensitive to students' needs, and there'll be an opportunity for breaks. And we clarified, um, the difference between cafeteria, physical education, recess breaks, and actually breaks during class time. And I would say that was probably the most substantive any change got. Right? They were just small wording changes otherwise. Okay. And then, Mary, did you want to speak too? I don't know how we, like, we, we have, in addition to having the clean, we probably have another wording change that Mary wanted to talk about.
I spoke with Kim this afternoon, um, based on new CDC guidelines that had been released where the definition of how COVID-19 virus had, was actually transmitting. Um, because in our policy, in the definitions area, it's looking at face mask, face coverings and masks. It, we have a very specific definition on how it's potentially transmitted. And so, we thought it would be better, considering the fact that this is a ongoing and learning situation for how, what we know about this virus, that perhaps we should take out the last descriptor of, which reads, "which is currently by droplets when an individual coughs, sneezes, or talks," considering that the CDC now is including an aerosol transmission as a possibility for, um, the virus spreading.
And I would just add to that. I think that very much with this policy, we're trying to keep it as, um, not current, that's not the word, so that it doesn't rely on small changes that we keep, that we allow the operational side of the board, you know, of the administration to, to make those decisions about exactly what mask can be worn and can't be worn and all of that, so that if we can make the policy clear philosophically, um, that we don't have to come back and revisit policy all the time. And so, as the CDC information changes, if we take that out of pa-, on page A, then we don't have to revisit that if, if that changes.
Because what didn't change is the fact that the masks are the, the most key part that we need. So, that's the one thing that hasn't changed, and so that way, it does cover any potential further adjustments.
Kim, are you, um, suggesting that the word "clean" be added? The end of the statement from "which on..." Sorry. The word "clean" for the, um, face coverings before "cloth" is added, and then removing the "which" through the, "which is currently by droplets when an individual coughs, sneezes, or talks" be removed?
Yes, in addition to those other changes, yes. Thank you.
Just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
All right. For our purposes, the motion would have to contain those changes so that it can be put in. So, um, Mary, did you get the changes in the motion? Not, not specifically the, the, it, it's, it's fine. You can, there's two changes or edits, as long as...
Gotcha. I have it.
Okay. So, does everyone understand the changes? Yes? Okay. Anything else? Kim?
No.
Mary? You're good? Okay. All right. Thanks, guys. I know, I know that was a lot of work on that one policy, and wanted to make sure it's right. So, uh, understanding the changes, the two changes, I'm looking for a motion to, uh, approve Cabe's Policy 5141.8 Face Mask Coverings. Do I have a motion? Susan, second. Mary? Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Very good. Yeah, Mary? Okay. Uh, moving on to item number two, recycling discussion and possible action required. Um, Mary brought this to us at the last meeting in August. Um, we have gathered some further information. I don't know if you want to give an update of what you know, or do you want me, I... I'm sorry. All right. I, I spoke to, uh, Mr. Goldblatt, uh, Selectman Goldblatt, and then I also spoke to Mr. Wilkins, who I believe is the Vice President of Simple Recycling. Uh, some of the questions that the board had were the actual size of the container itself. Um, it's 46 inches by 46 inches by 80 inches high. So, it's roughly four, four feet by four feet and a typical height of, let's see, what is that? Uh, about six feet, I suppose. Um, it's, it's, it's typical of what you see in supermarket parking lots quite often. Basically the same thing. Um, the town would receive $115, is receiving $115 per ton collected. They have a, I believe they started it at the recycling, or I'm sorry, the, uh, the dump and also at, uh, High Plains. Um, one of the other things that Mr. Wilkins talked about was that the box would be collected once a week. Uh, they would come and collect the box. If, uh, a principal or security or whomever, uh, saw that the box was full or overflowing, uh, he asked that they be called immediately. Uh, and they would come and retrieve the items within 24 hours. Other than that, uh, were there any other questions that I could possibly answer for you? If Mary has, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up with, with, um, I spoke with Mr. Goldblatt this afternoon, actually, about it, just to try to get a little bit more information. Um, he did say it would be monitored weekly, and it would be picked up within 48 hours. 22 working days is what he told me today, just to make sure that, if there was, um, overflowing. And then, one of the things that I thought was a key point for information was that he indicated that each school principal or head custodian or the Board of Ed could specify the location for each school. So, that way, we can in, choose individually what spots are available and would be the least disruptive to the daily routines, security concerns, and things like that. Um, that's the, that was the big, my biggest concern as well. I know that we all were sort of sharing that.
So, Mr. Goldblatt said 48, I'm not understanding, the 22 days?
Uh, I'm sorry. Within two working days, 48 hours.
I see.
If it's, if it's being reported, there'd be, it'll be monitored weekly. And then, if, um, if it is deemed to be overflowing and the report is made, then, uh, that, it will be picked up within, and emptied within two working days, 48 hours. We just wanted to make sure in case somebody called on Friday that they weren't expecting it to be picked up by Sunday, so...
Oh, I understand. Okay. Um, go ahead, Sue.
I just wanted to clarify, to see if, in fact, um, there's been any thought to making sure that we're not taking up certain parking places as well. Most of the schools are short on parking places, and so I think we just need to keep cognizant. I think this is important to do. It's important to recycle and reuse and, um... But I think we just need to be careful of, to make sure that we aren't using spaces that people need.
Okay. Ken, go ahead.
I didn't like the idea of, uh, this being done on the school. Uh, I don't like the idea of added traffic. I don't like the idea of parents coming and dropping off their children and then going to the recycle bin. We have increased traffic now at schools with the parents bringing their children, as well as the buses. Uh, and we don't want other people coming to the school that, that have no business there. Those are my only complaints.
Go ahead, Betty.
Has anyone seen the container at High Plains? I have no idea where it is. Has anyone seen it?
No. The container at High Plains has not been placed yet.
Oh, it's not there?
No. Mitch said that they're still waiting to hear from, um, either the First Selectman or someone at High Plains what spot exactly will be used there.
Oh, okay. It's at the dump. I think it's at the dump though, right?
Yeah. But that one's much bigger, from my understanding.
Yeah, I would imagine it would be.
I'm, I'm kind of, um, feeling the same way as Ken and that if we have a big container at High Plains, and there's one at the, at the transfer station, I don't exactly see the need for it at, um, our schools.
Anyone? Go ahead, Charles.
I know, I, I, I think we all understand the importance of recycling. I don't think that's the issue. Uh, but to, I would echo Mr. Ziman's comments as well. I, I don't see how this would help recycling anymore. There are already stations at the transfer station, and I, I'm concerned Buildings and Grounds hasn't had a chance to discuss this, but there are some security issues that I, I think could arise. And, uh, I don't think it would hurt the recycling program in any manner just if there were not these things on the, uh, the school grounds for some of the reasons that, uh, Mr. Ziman has stated. Um, so I, you know, I think we're all pro-recycling. I just don't know that, uh, where we're trying to limit traffic in schools in a pandemic, that this is the time or, or place to, to best do that. Whereas, we're a relatively small town, and a trip to the transfer station is always one of the highlights of my week, I know. So, I, I don't think it's a big inconvenience, uh, to, uh, to find a, a, a better and safer location. Thank you.
I may have, uh, similar thoughts as well as to those with, uh, some concerns on this. And I find it curious that right on the heels of our passing, you know, the mask, you know, requirements for our students, recognizing that the, uh, the, the transmissibility of contaminants and contagions by aerosol and liquids, what we're essentially talking about is having our schools become biohazard receptacles because all, all the things that we're talking about recycling tend to be things that we used to consume, consumables, you know, soda cans, uh, you know, whatever else. And so, and these, so these are, are contaminated items that we're now asking our community to bring onto school grounds that are susceptible to a strong wind blowing it around. I mean, we probably gonna have enough issues with masks, uh, and how to properly dispose of them. So, anyway, I just have a, an additional, uh, concern on top of the other's voice that I don't see why we need to have schools' locations be the origin or point of, uh, transfer for, uh, contaminants like recyclables.
I, I, I should have brought this to the board's attention. Mr. Goldblatt did tell me that the containers are for textiles, uh, toys, small appliances, and, uh, handbags and shoes. But I understand your concern. Sometimes people use those for other reasons other than what they're specified for. Um, anyone else? Kim? No? Um, I have some concerns about the location of these. Uh, I would not want them on school property unless they were within the view of a camera. The other concern I have is on the weekends and after 3:00 in the afternoon. And, uh, it, it, the transfer station is, obviously, it gets used. When the transfer station's open, so it's monitored. High Plains generally, it's a very busy place. There's people all the time. But, um, our, some of our schools are isolated, and I have a little concern about that. Um, and I would echo, I'm sorry, I'll get to you, Mary. I would echo what, uh, Charles said, uh, we're all for recycling, uh, I'm sure. But, um, this may not be the time or place. Um, Mary, go ahead. I mean, uh, Betty, go ahead.
I guess, um, and I am very much in favor of recycling, but I'm thinking about how many times do you see those containers that it say donate books, clothes? And there's stuff all over the place flowing out of it. And pe-, many people use it as a place to dump stuff, and, um, that's a concern.
I, um, what was expressed to me was that the initial proposal of including the schools was trying to make it as accessible and successful for the community as possible. I did ask Mr. Goldblatt today if other areas within town would be possible or had been explored, such as a box at High, um, not just at High Plains, but at the library, or potentially at the park and ride off of 34. If there are other options within town that we could explore that would also provide easy access for all of the residents to try to make this, um, program successful. I don't believe those areas had been explored because of the initial contract with Simple Recycling. Um, but perhaps that is something we can look at.
That would be fine. Um, if I could make a suggestion. Um, I don't know that we want to completely dismiss this out of hand and shut the door. Um, given what's going on with, uh, COVID and all the different things that are going on with, uh... You know, we're very busy in the mornings, people dropping off. We're very, very busy in the afternoons with people dropping off. It's just a different environment. It's just a different environment at the schools right now. My suggestion would be to take and maybe get some more information as to where maybe some of these other locations could be done, you know, that the, the town, town could do that. Maybe take another look at this in, say, February, see where things settle down and where we stand with everything else. Because everything else, everything's really kind of up in the air right now. So if we were to deny it at this point, I would ask that maybe we take a look at it again in February at some point.
If I can ask that Building and Grounds take a look at it before it comes to the board? Because as Charles had indicated, they hadn't discussed it. And so maybe that could allay some of the concerns. They can discuss it at Building and Grounds first.
If the board would be more comfortable with that, that's fine with me. I did tell Mr. Goldblatt that I would bring it to the board tonight and that's why it's here. But if this, if the board in general would want to put this down onto Buildings and Grounds for further evaluation and then we could bring it up in the, what are we, in September? In the October meeting, maybe? Ken?
I was just gonna say I'd rather go back to Mr. Goldblatt and Mr. Zioli and ask them, tell them about our concerns. And maybe it doesn't even have to go to Building and Grounds.
So what do we ask, what, what are you asking us to do with that? Ask them to?
I'm not clear on this. Do we vote on this? Are we able to?
We are, we, we are. Now, there is a gray area. I think that whether we say no or not, I think that it's town property and it's a town program. However, however, Mr. Zioli and, and the Board of Selectmen respect the fact that the, we oversee the schools and that's why they ask the question of us. So I don't think that that's their intent is to, you know, they're asking us for a reason because they want to know our opinion.
Then what I'd like to do is?
Oh, Mr. Duna, if you just turn it around, please.
What I'd like to see us do then is as a board, if we can vote on it now, and send it back to them if it's rejected. And if it's accepted, then send it to Building and Grounds. You know what I mean? I don't think there's, there's a reason to go any further or send it to Building and Grounds if we decide as a group that we, that at this stage we don't want it.
And let, and let the town?
Yeah, let the town know and then, then we can revisit it or then they can come back to us.
And see if they want to pursue it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I got you. Is, is any further discussion on that option? Basically deny it, ask the town to review it? And if they want to get back to us, you know, gives everybody a little more time, maybe with a different proposal?
I think it's important that they understand what our concerns are to the points of that just came out here. So yes, I think that's a good idea, that we let them know how we feel. That's important.
Okay, do we want to put together or have a, a letter put together? Yeah, okay, how would that be? Put together and maybe with some bullet points? Actually, you know what? Would you trust Mr. Ziman and Dr. Scarpetti to put something together based on our discussion this evening? Would you feel for that? All right, so we'll do that. So the motion would be to deny the containers at this time and to task Dr. Scarpetti and Mr. Ziman with a letter to be written to the Board of Selectmen stating our concerns. And so that they're clear on that. And if they would like to have further discussions, we can have that with Buildings and Grounds and them. Do you get that, Mary? No? Yeah, pretty good? Okay. So I made, I made the motion. Do I have a second? Susan, any further discussion, guys?
This is a motion to deny the request.
Yes, to deny the request, yes. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstaining? Very good. All right, recycling. Board of Education dates. Board members to review dates for discussion and vote in, at October meeting. You all have your dates. Any opinions on these dates? Susan? No? Any opinions on the calendar at all? So Dr. Scarpetti, you're asking for us to vote on this tonight, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does anyone have any objections to that? All right, so I will be looking for a motion to approve the Orange Elementary School Student Calendar for 2021. Do I have a motion?
I have a question first.
Okay.
Are you voting on the Board of Education meeting dates?
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what? That's my mistake. That's my mistake. Yes, yep, thank you. No, no, I'm sorry. My mistake. So no, Board meeting dates. You got that too, Mary? I'm working you out tonight. Do I have a motion? I, I mean, Susan, second. Susan, any further discussion?
I know this is a dumb question. We are talking about the board meetings, not the school.
Board meetings, yes, Charles. All in favor? Opposed, abstaining? All right. Let's see, covering this. Okay, Turkey Hill Loading Dock, discussion. The loading dock at Turkey Hill basically rotted away, needs to be replaced. We got some bids for the work. The, thank you to Bob Britton, the town engineer, who actually did the technical drawings for us for the, for the dock itself. Saved us quite a bit of money because it, it has to be engineered. It's a, it's, it's a fairly in-depth process, you know, that they have to dig down four feet below the frost line, the whole nine yards. It's, it's a loading dock. What was there before was basically a steel plate welded on some beams and kind of rotted out, so, anyway. And in the, in the meantime, I had a discussion with Mr. Houlihan over at Board of Finance and asked if they would be able to maybe help us out with this cost of the dock. And I got word this evening that their meeting is going on at the same time as ours, that the Board of Finance did approve twenty-four thousand dollars for us to put this dock in. And we'll work out the details with them. Christine and John can do that as far as, we may front the money, but we'll be reimbursed for that. So it being over twenty thousand dollars, I told Dr. Scarpetti that I thought we should bring it to the board regardless of who funds it, whether we do or the town does. So I, I will be looking for a motion to approve the installation of the loading dock at the Turkey Hill School. Charles? Susan? Any further discussion on this? Mike, you have anything to add?
I don't, excited.
All right. All in favor, yes, Sue?
I just wanted to thank the, the Town Board of Finance for approving those funds for us. That's a huge help, especially with all the extra costs we currently have.
Yes, they've been very, very good with us through the years, as we all know. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstaining? Very good. Let's see. Done with that. Discussion pending litigation on the matter of JT versus de Blasio, Idea Class Action Suit lawsuit. We will have to be going into executive session for that discussion. Discussion and action on successor collective bargaining agreement with the Orange Administrators Association. We'll be going into executive session for that. So we will move on to standing committees. And first up is Susan.
The Finance and Operations Subcommittee met prior to this meeting. As Mrs. Koch mentioned, everything is order with both the 2019, 2020 budget, which will end up with a break even, which is fantastic. And nothing additional on the current expenses as they were pretty minimal and in order, of course. And they're currently working on the audit, which will be completed before the end of December. That's all.
Sue? Very well. Personnel, Kim?
Okay, so we have a little tricky situation here. So I knew that, that Mary had repaired the policy correctly because I got an email that showed me all the changes had been made. And so when I saw the missing word clean, I was like, okay, but I know I saw that that was made. That's because there's the wrong policy in the board packet. So, right. So the draft, so I just shared the draft that you should have had. And I just, I missed it because I had Mary's changes. So I don't know how we fix that.
How different is the policy that we voted on and the policy that we should have voted on?
I will tell you, I will list for you the changes that I gotta, I have to pull up her changes. So there were seven changes. One is the line that I talked about, about the number of mask breaks. So in addition to mask breaks during physical education, lunch and recess, that students would have mask breaks during the day, which replaced the set number of two in the morning and two in the afternoon. We added clean in front of cloth. We replaced paper, so instead of paper, it's KN95. And then we also used the word surgical procedure style as a type of mask. And we replaced isolation room with designated area. So those were the changes that I was talking about, but they are not actually in the copy that you read prior to this meeting. I just shared this copy with you, but those were the seven reflected changes.
Okay, so some of those changes are fairly substantial changes, isolation room and that sort of thing. I honestly don't know.
Well, it's not a change in the place, it's just a change in the wording. It's still the same place.
But it's a change nonetheless. You know, we have to know differently than what we just did.
Right, I think, right. I, I just, I think we could handle that today, which is why I'm glad I caught it. This is just more 2020 for us.
So you're suggesting that we revote on the policy with the changes that you just listed?
Yes, and if anyone can, if you want.
All right, so I'm going to ask for some assistance here. How do we un-vote a policy vote in the same meeting?
Unvoting, we'd be voting for the policy again.
But do we have, do we have to?
It would be with changes based on those seven changes.
But do we have to strike the original motion and policy?
Well, we don't have to. But we don't have to because we don't strike our old policies when we get a new policy.
We don't have to strike it.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm, I'm asking because I, this one I don't know.
We have to amend the wording of this policy. Basically, we're passing a new version of the policy.
My only concern is that?
What's that?
This has not had a first and a second read, the one added. So when it came out the first time, did it have the changes?
No, we can change wording.
So we can change, we can make changes to wording. We can actually even make substantive changes to content. It's not always advised, not that I want to bring it up, but I think that's with our, you know, with our food policy, we made some substantive changes in, in, you know, at the second read. These are not substantive changes. These are wording changes. Now, if any, I mean, I, I want to do this right. So if anyone's uncomfortable with that, I think even the changes I described when I was explaining the policy were the changes we actually made. They just weren't reflected. For those of you who are not part of the committee, if you read this policy tonight, you didn't see them. However, they are the ones that I described. The bulk of those changes are still in that face covering mask definition with the word clean, the word KN, clean cloth, KN95, or disposable surgical procedure style. Those were the bulk of the changes right there. And then the other two changes, it was a wording change of isolation room to designated area. And then the other change that I discussed about not a set number of masks breaks, but in addition to physical education, lunch and recess, there would be mask breaks during the day. So I apologize that I didn't see that. I had a copy of the draft. I knew those changes had been made and just the wrong one was put into the board packet.
No, that's all right. It, it happens. Sue, is your concern that the board has not had a chance to have a first read and/or second read?
I just want to make sure.
Of the changed policy?
I was in the policy meeting, I'm part of policy, so I knew what the changes were. I just want to make sure that everybody else who's not on policy, who didn't hear the changes are good to vote with those changes and the change that Mary had. With taking out the rest of that sentence. That's my only concern. If everybody else is okay, I'm, we're fine to vote on it.
And that's what it does, Bill and Charles, because everybody?
Yep, everybody else is on.
Does anyone else have an opinion on this?
I think what he was saying is it's really more of a Scrivener's error and that we, I think almost everybody here is on the committee. We knew exactly what we were doing, the verbiage we picked, and it was more of a Scrivener error in just presenting the wrong document tonight. The question is whether or not those couple people who weren't in the Subcommittee for Policy actually read the intended policy or whether or not they read the inadvertently provided unamended policy. And to the extent that there could be any concern that one or more of those individuals cast their vote on the inadvertently included policy, then what we're really talking about in that circumstance is more of a substantive change and we have two choices. One, I think we'd have to provide for another second read for those people who didn't understand what the real language was that we were voting on. Or I think that what we otherwise would be doing would be putting forth before the board something that isn't on the agenda, namely correcting the Scrivener error that has substantive amendments in it, which I think would require a two-thirds vote of the board to add something to the agenda that wasn't previously put on it, which I think we're set to do. And then once we pass that, adding something to the agenda that wasn't previously noticed, then we have a motion seeking to have the proper policy acted upon. But those who didn't read the intended verbiage, as was orally expressed by Kim, need to be able to, need to know for themselves and for their constituents that they know exactly what language we're talking about. I don't think there'd be any issue. I think we all know what it is, but I think that's the posture that we're in.
I want to make sure we follow procedure, that's all. So who did not get a chance, who, who is not on policy? I guess that's the order to start. Charles? That's it? Are you, are you comfortable, Charles, with us?
Yeah, I mean, I, the changes I viewed as improvements and I, I voted for it based on the content of what Kim spoke to. I, I would just say going forward, I, I think the, the format of Google Docs, maybe if we could just get a PDF so we know that this is the, the right version. Because it, for me, I think that would be helpful going forward.
Thank you, Charles. How about you, Jeff?
Always send this back and vote on it in the following month. That's how we used to do it previously. I'm okay with it. I did read the one that was sent to me in my packet. But as we were going through the meeting tonight, I understood what Kim was saying. So I, I would be fine with it, but I think we do have to follow what Christian said with the proper order on voting.
No, I agree. I, I agree with that, that we need to follow proper procedure, what Christian said. So we will need a, we will need a motion to amend tonight's agenda. And I think it would, it would have to have what? Separate, it needs a separate number to it, correct?
Uh, yeah.
So we would?
So we would, we could add it, we could add it after, we would have to add it after either long range, number five, or the ACES update because we're going into executive session. Does it matter where it goes?
I don't think it really matters where it goes so long as we're making it a publicly recognizable addition and that we'll vote on it presumably to, by a distinct majority, two-thirds plus, agree with it, which I.
All right. Let's start with the amendment then. Let me see where I am here. Okay. So I will need a motion to amend tonight's agenda, Monday, September 21st, 2020, Orange Board of Education, to add the edited version. Is that language good? Edited version of Caves Policy 5141.8 Face Mask Coverings and make it Item 6, Understanding Committees. Does that work? Work, Christian? All right. I made the motion. Do I have a second? Susan? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Staying? All right, so we will get to that as Item 6, so.
Bill, if I may add, just, I think I said before, but I did share the version with you, the correct version. So if you, you know, wanted to take a few minutes, you could see the text of that.
Okay. All right, very good. Does anyone need a minute or can we move on with the committees? One? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Brow for that. Buildings and grounds. Charles?
Good evening, and I hope everyone and their families are well. Building and grounds was scheduled to meet earlier this evening, but due to the professional duties of our Subcommittee, we had to cancel because of some outstanding commitments. So we will be meeting again soon and taking up some of those items on the agenda. Since I last spoke to the board, I had asked Dr. Scarpetti and Mr. Gray if I could see the last two schools that I hadn't seen in person before reopening. And I'm sure they were thrilled on the Friday afternoon before the weekend of school starting to take a board member on a tour. But again, speaking to just who they were, they met me on a late Friday afternoon, and we toured Racebrook and MLT. And we were greeted by, at Racebrook, by Mrs. Anoffrey, who I congratulate, I believe she's celebrating her 25th year, I saw there, and Mrs. Gallagher, and we got to see some of the protective equipment in the main office there. We also got to tour some of the sample, some of the classrooms that have been set up for social distancing. We ran into Dr. Russo, who was, I believe, with Mrs. Bronson, testing out some of the cameras that the board had supported to help support remote learning. We also took a look at Mrs. Martino's classroom, and there we got to see some of the desks that Holy Infant had shared with the board for this year to help facilitate our social distancing. The day was not all business, and I had the delight of seeing Dr. Scarpetti try out the new playground at Racebrook, which also has a new surface that will help us with cost-saving, with, will have to be replaced with playground trips on a frequent basis there. Mr. Gray mentioned some of the HVAC units that are in progress are already completed, and keys for staff members were being prepared for some of the new ways that students are entering and leaving the building. We also got to visit MLT. I don't know if Dr. Scarpetti had told Mr. Gray that we were going to MLT as well, but he graciously shared with us some of the design there, and we met with Mrs. Lasto. MLT is designed by, kind of right now, by the home schools to help with the cohorting and tracking of students. The younger generation of Lasto ladies had painted some murals there at MLT about some of the core values before they headed off to Sacred Heart and Marist respectively for their college duties. MLT in particular was absolutely spotless inside. Mrs. Lasto shared with us the plan to have a staggered arrival for the cars. If any of you have ever been at Schoolhouse Lane, it's very narrow. We're here tonight, obviously, but it's a very narrow area, and they had come up with a program to try to minimize the traffic over time. We also got to tour the building and see some of the new ways that materials are sent safely to and from classrooms. There were even new ways for hanging up coats and backpacks in the hallways to help with safety. The playground also at MLT had had some upgrades similar to what Racebrook had. I believe Mrs. Ferstein of the PTA had created a new bulletin board there where she had taken quite a bit of time to assemble it all at home and then bring it in to MLT. I was also impressed by the way that the, where the nurses' offices have been sort of reset up this year so that if a student is ill, there's a safe place for them to stay, and there's a separate entrance and exit for parents to come and pick up their young one. Mr. Gray already mentioned the assistance of the Congregational Church with the 35 spaces, which is deeply appreciated. You know, I think I had a big ask in asking Dr. Scarpetti and Mr. Gray to see two more schools, but I felt Building and Grounds chairperson was important to say I had been in the building and we're going to be sending all of our children here in Orange too, and I appreciate the time that they spent on a late Friday after, I'm sure it was a very long week for them. I leave everyone with the vision I chose to appreciate most, and that was Mrs. Kaplan's room. There's all sorts of protocols for health and masks, and I thought to myself, how could a kindergartner make sense of all this? And true to her calling, Mrs. Kaplan had decorated the dividers in her desk with Mickey Mouse ears, and I thought that really captures so much of what the team and the teachers have done to make this not just a safe place, but a place that students will feel comfortable. So I sign off, Mr. Chairman, with MICKEYMOUSE, which to me really just captures the beautiful blend of, you know, work to prepare safe and healthy schools, but also to make schools someplace that kids still want to be and feel comfortable with. So, thank you.
Charles, you do know that that song brings a tear to Mr. Cap's eye? Okay. This has been an interesting meeting, to say the least. Mr. Ziman, who I think is rebranding himself as the Karate Kid. Your name. It's my, it's my new look. Next month, could I not follow, Charles? My new pen pal is Lisa Steiner of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. And in one of her many missives, she said, and I quote, "In this rapidly evolving landscape, leadership matters more than ever. With that in mind, we should note that while district after district announced delays to begin their school year for the planning they still needed to do, Orange was able to open on schedule. This is because our administration had planned and prepared as much as possible for all eventualities. Actually, credit and thanks go all around. To the parents for their courage and willingness to put their trust in that administration, for the administration for doing everything that can be done to justify that trust, and for our teachers and all staff for making this most unusual school situation work." At our meeting, Dr. Russo spoke with her usual level of enthusiasm about how well the teachers embraced the challenge of juggling tasks to start school, how they worked to meet the needs of all their students, and how they adapted to and embraced all the new technology they're being exposed to, especially the cameras with which they will be able to communicate with their children regardless of the format. It should be mentioned also that our IT staff stood tall at this time, available at each school to help with the inevitable technological issues that did or could arise, and offer any help that might have been needed. Dr. Scarpetti and Russo explained the value of the early dismissal days during this first week. This gave teachers the opportunity to revisit PD topics and strategies for using the technology more effectively and discussing any special problems they encountered. So we will move on to, oh, no, I'm sorry, long range. Betty?
The ad hoc long range committee has not formally met in a number of months. In the, before that time when we, after we last met, I have since spoken with Dr. Scarpetti and Dr. Russo about updating the document that we have, but the COVID closure and other issues have taken priority on time available. I will speak with Dr. Scarpetti to set a date for our group to meet in the not-too-distant future to update and move ahead.
Thank you, Betty. Okay, so we will move on to item number six. Second read, I will be looking for a motion to approve Caves Policy 5141.8 Face Mask Coverings as updated by Mrs. Brow. Is that, does that suffice, everybody? Does anyone need the updated, any update information from Mrs. Brow, or are we all good with this? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to approve Caves Policy 5141.8 Face Mask Coverings as updated by Mrs. Brow. Susan, Betty, second. Any further discussion? No? All in favor? Opposed? Staying? Very good. ACES. Susan?
So ACES met on September 10th, both via Zoom and in person. Couple things I passed, I already showed Kim and Betty, I'm going to send it. They have to do, each year they have to file an annual report, and this is reinventing ACES, their annual report. So there's a lot in there about the schools and what they do and, you know, all the services they provide. So a lot of people think of ACES as just a special ed program. It's not. It's much more than that. It has magnet schools, it has certain services it provides, there's a lot going on. And so as a board member on ACES as well, we learn about a lot of them, and sometimes I will say, wow, we do that too? It's crazy. But they do a lot. So the meeting, ACES ended up having surplus for the last fiscal year, and so they were applying some of the money to other obligations as well as looking to adjust some of our facilities. So there is a, one of our magnet schools will no longer have its location coming up. One of ACES's magnet schools will no longer have their current location. So we're in the process of trying to find another building, and we believe that we've found one, and more to come on that. ACES is also updating their, sorry, is going through their audit, and are on track as well. All their schools are back to school as well. Unfortunately, they have had one case in one of their magnet schools, but they did not have to shut down based on the Department of Health. One of the big things that happened was they're talking about a, an order for all of the teachers and all ACES employees come, to be able to come back. Not all of the people who are employees, where their children are going back to school. A lot of those children were actually, you know, all fully remote, and that was really hard on those employees. And so what ACES did was they created an ACES employee daycare for any parent who had a child from pre-K up to eighth grade, and they could go and pay the, whatever the state rate for daycare was with a discount. So it provided those educators and those staff members the ability to do that, which I thought was pretty cool as well. They are also offering free breakfast and free lunch to all students. One of their big things that HR is doing in ACES is trying to increase the diversity of staff members, specifically of educators. And so there's a relatively high number of minorities in some of the schools, and unfortunately, we don't have as many diverse educators. And so one of the things we're looking as people leave is trying to look at, trying to recruit people from diverse backgrounds, which will ultimately create a more of a like-me environment. So obviously, the best candidate would always get the job, but if we're not getting even looked at by some of our diverse candidates, you know, that's challenging. So that's some of the things that they're working on in HR. We had a new early head start update. We ended up finding out that we had applied for and won a grant at ACES, which was for $840,000 over five years for the early head start program. So they were very happy about that, and they want to expand that as well. At the abridged version, that's, but the only other thing I wanted to note is that currently, Orange does not have any students in any ACES schools. Amity has three students from Orange that are going to ECA, and they also have students from Woodbridge and Bethany. But right now, to the best of my knowledge, and Mrs. Zeder, you may be able to clarify, but to the best of my knowledge, we do not have any in their special schools nor in their magnet schools. That's it.
So it is time to get ourselves into executive session. I will need a motion to move to, hold on a second. Yep, that's the wrong page. Here we go. The Board of Education hereby moves to enter into executive session in order to review documents and discuss negotiations related to the collective bargaining in accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes 1-206E and 1-210B9, and to discuss pending litigation in the matter of JT versus de Blasio, in accordance to Connecticut General Statute Section Dr. Scarpetti, will you be joining us?
Yes, sir.
All right. Dr. Scarpetti has been invited. He will be attending. So I need a motion to enter into executive session for those two matters. Betty, Susan, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Staying? All right, we are in executive session. All right, so we're back from executive session. I am looking for a motion to accept and approve and to provide funding for the tentative agreement reached for a successor collective bargaining agreement between the Orange Board of Education and the Orange Administrators Association. The board further delegates to the board chair to execute the final contract document on behalf of the board. Do I have a motion? Susan, second. Charles, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Very well. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Susan, second by Ken, the Karate Kid. And we are adjourned at 9:14, Susan. Thank you, everybody.